Welcome everyone out to our six o'clock workshop, two workshops today. So we'll go ahead and start. Do we have a, Bob, do we have a report or presentation?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. There are two workshops scheduled for you this evening. The first is for the Heritage Lake Specific Plan Amendment, a pre-application review, which is number 2015-221. Lisa Gordon, our Planning Manager, she is also the Project Manager on this as well. I would ask Lisa to review it with the Planning Commission, and then we'd be able to respond to any questions that the Commission may have.
Good evening. Lisa Gordon presenting the pre-application review number 2015-221 for the Heritage Lake Specific Plan Amendment. The project site is located north of McCall and west of Briggs Road, highlighted in the blue on the screen. The existing zoning is the Menifee Valley Ranch Specific Plan number 301, and it designates the property as commercial. The applicant is proposing to change that zoning to medium-high residential with 4,500 square foot minimum lots. To the north, south, and west, the property is also within the specific plan and zone for residential uses with lot sizes ranging from 6,000 to 7,200 square feet. And to the east is the Winchester Hills Specific Plan, and that specific plan designates property as commercial to the east. The proposal to amend the Menifee Valley Ranch Specific Plan is to change the land use of Planning Area 41 from commercial to medium-high density residential, so five to eight dwelling units per acre. Instead of commercial, the applicant proposes approximately 80 residential lots with a minimum lot size of 4,500 square feet and a community pool and spa with restrooms and parking. On the screen is a conceptual lot layout that the applicant has prepared. The reason for the change is the applicant's concern over the viability of the site for future commercial uses. Although there is residential surrounding the site, the property is not in close proximity to a freeway, and there is little to know through traffic east on McCall Boulevard or along Briggs Road. While there may be additional traffic in the future, it may not be able to develop the property for a commercial use within the next 20 years. In addition, there are parcels zoned for commercial use at the north and southwest corners of McCall and Menifee Road. This property is closer to the freeway, and these segments of roads receive more traffic, so they are more viable commercial properties. Neither property has been developed yet, but a shopping center was approved on the northwest corner of McCall and Menifee. Another concern is the compatibility with the surrounding residential uses. Homeowners often do not want to be located in close proximity to commercial uses due to noise, light, traffic, and perceived impacts on property values. The applicant has conducted outreach meetings with the Homeowners Association for Heritage Lakes, and the amendment to the specific plan was well received by the homeowners within the development. The homeowners generally preferred residential uses at this location, and were also supportive of another pool facility. At this time, staff recommends we conduct the open-to-the-public workshop and provide feedback to the applicant. This concludes staff presentation.
So we'll just have the applicant speak at this point. Does applicant like to address us? Mr., go ahead and let us know your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Jacobson. I'm Project Manager with CalAtlantic Homes, formerly Standard Pacific Homes. We are the master developer and the sole home builder in the Heritage Lake Community in Menifee. And so I just wanted to provide a little bit of history and context for how we got started down the road to potentially seeking a specific plan amendment and zone change for this site. Standard Pacific, in a partnership, purchased the property back in 2002, and it is planned for 2,609 units within the Heritage Lake Master Plan Community. It's important to note that the Heritage Lake Community is only a portion of the land area that's covered by the Menifee Valley Ranch Specific Plan, which is the document that designates this for commercial. The remaining area is north of the railroad track right of way and is not controlled by Standard Pacific. It's controlled by another developer. So when we bought the property, the land uses were all well-defined by the specific plan that had been adopted by the County of Riverside, and so that's why it calls for a commercial site in that location, and we have been aware of that from the beginning. You know, over time, as things develop, you get a clearer picture of what a neighborhood needs or what a community needs. And several years ago, we started to realize that the commercial site didn't seem particularly viable primarily because of its location. As Lisa pointed out, it's toward the east side, it's on the east side of our community, adjacent to Briggs Road, and it doesn't have a lot of desirable attributes as far as traffic and visibility and that sort of thing that would make it desirable to a commercial developer. And so we started thinking about, you know, what else might we do there, and the obvious answer is to build more homes. And so talked to, we discussed this with city staff and sort of the process, and one of their earliest recommendations was to do a little bit of a reach-out, outreach to the community. And so we did do that in early February of this year. I'm very familiar with the residents there. I serve as the President of the Homeowners Association there, so I meet with folks from the community every couple of months throughout the year. And over time, one of the largest complaints we've had at HOA meetings is overcrowding of the pool facility. Currently, there are roughly 1,800 residents at Heritage Lake, and there's one recreation facility. It is a large facility. It includes a large swimming pool, a splash park, a clubhouse, docks for paddle boats for the lake. But we have, you know, regularly gotten comments that especially during the summer, the pool is very crowded, and they've questioned multiple times, you know, is there going to be any more recreational facilities for the community, given that there are still hundreds of homes to be built? And so we realized that that was a main concern of the residents, and so that's why we've included, as you see on the exhibit, a second recreational facility. That facility would be available to all members of Heritage Lake. It's not just for the 80 new homes that we're proposing. So in addition to the outreach, just for our own sort of check to see if our thinking was correct, we did commission a study of available commercial property within the area. And the consultant we hired defined the trade area, if you will, as a radius of roughly three miles north of Heritage Lake, three miles west of Heritage Lake, three miles south of Heritage Lake, and a mile to the east. And within that area, they identified six potential commercial centers that already had zoning in place. Excuse me. Compared to those six, the report concluded that the commercial site at Heritage Lake is the least desirable, again, primarily because of traffic and visibility issues. Additionally, some of these other commercial sites, Lisa mentioned that there are commercially-zoned sites less than a quarter of a mile away on the west side of our property at McCall and Menifee, and one of those has already been approved for a shopping center. So it seems quite likely that the neighborhood center, commercial needs of this part of Menifee, will be met by another site before this site would be desirable for a commercial developer. I would also like to point out that Standard Pacific, we're solely, excuse me, CalAtlantic, still getting used to the name change, we're solely a residential developer. We don't develop commercial properties. So if this were to go commercial, that would be through the process of us selling the site to an interested commercial developer. And so as we thought all of this through, it seemed very obvious that without changing to a residential use, it's quite likely that the 15-acre site would remain vacant for quite some time. And we don't think that that's the best scenario for the existing residents. As Lisa said, generally residents don't like to be located adjacent to a commercial property. Currently, you can see from the aerial, the site doesn't have any homes around it, but ultimately, there will be residential directly west and directly north. And the tract to the north would have roughly-
Can we pull up the aerial on that?
So you can see the site in question is in blue there, and you can see we've already graded all around it. So directly to the west will be homes, and directly to the north, that tract to the north, the way it's currently mapped, would have approximately 20 homes whose backyard would be directly adjacent to the commercial site. And most likely, given the layout of that site, a commercial center, basically, that would be the back of the center where, you know, the trucks are making their deliveries and where the trash is kept and that sort of thing. So it's not a great adjacency for those future homeowners. That's really the main reason, you know, again, that we decided to look into this is just to, you know, we'd like to build out the community in its entirety and not be in a position where we've built all the homes, built all the parks, built the rec center, and we have this 15-acre piece that we just don't know when or if it'll ever be developed. And so it, again, it just seemed like the logical conclusion to us would be to put homes there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the Commissioners may have.
I've got a few, but let's go ahead and start with us, the Commissioners. Commissioner Kerwin, do you have some questions for Mr. Jacobson?
I do. When was this property purchased?
2002.
So why now?
It just, you know, initially, we were focused on building homes. I mean, that's what we do. That's the main reason we purchased it. And it didn't, this issue didn't really come to a fore, if you will. And so now that we have, you know, it's 10, we've been delivering homes since late 2004, so we're almost 11 years in, and as I said, we have over 1,800 residents there, and we have a better feel for sort of the surrounding area, what development's going on. And so it became clear that it didn't seem like a logical location for commercial. And the process of doing the specific plan amendment and zone change is quite a lengthy one, and so we thought, you know, we don't have homes on that site in our business plan in the near future.
But let me stop you. The nearest commercial, I don't know, outlet anywhere near here, it's gotta be, what, that AMPM up at the State Road 74? That Arco AMPM?
I'm not exactly sure which is the closest, but that may be the closest one.
I'll tell you what, all this open space is slated for homes. Don't you think those people are gonna want someplace to get stuff?
Oh, I have no doubt they will. I think that the other, the other sites that are zoned for commercial, one of which already has an approved shopping center on it, I think those will be developed before. And so by the time, by the time we would get to there, there wouldn't be the need for the other commercial. Just getting the new center that's going down at Menifee and Newport will be great for the community and will most likely be where most of the community goes once that center's developed. And so even once that center's in place, even if the one at Menifee and McCall hasn't yet been developed, I don't know that our site is gonna be particularly attractive to a commercial developer.
I'll have to tell you.
Commissioner Phillips?
This site was identified as commercial, you said, 2002?
Well, it was, the specific plan was written and approved many years before that, but we knew when we purchased the property that that was what the specific plan called for at this site.
Okay. The second question I had had to do with the lot size. What size of homes are you planning on putting in there, on those tiny little lots?
We, the lots, the way they've been preliminarily laid out, are 50 feet wide by 90, which is where you get to the minimum 4,500 square feet. And so the home sizes would range likely, depending on if there's a single-story home or not, from 1,700 square feet up to 2,500, 2,600 square feet. 50-foot-wide lots accommodate a 40-foot-wide house, and a 40-foot-wide house is typically what's developed on 5,000-square-foot lots, and in some cases, larger. Directly diagonal from the blue site, we have an actively selling community, our Lakeview Community. Those are 5,000-square-foot lots. Those homes are 40 feet wide, and they range from 1,800 to 2,700 square feet. Driving through this community, you would be hard-pressed to tell any difference from any of the other planning areas that are zoned for 5,000-square-foot lots, because the lots are the same width. We're not proposing any kind of, you know, we're not proposing townhomes. We're not proposing zero-lot line. We're not proposing shared driveways or motor court product. There'll be single-family detached homes, traditional layout, garage facing the street. Everybody has their own driveway access to the public street. So yes, the minimum ones, which they're, the way it's currently laid out, 38 of the 80 are at the minimum 4,500 square feet. The others are all above that. So technically, yes, they're 500 square feet smaller than a 5,000-square-foot lot, but building separation, everything else, it'll appear the same as our other 5,000-square-foot lot neighborhoods.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Sowick?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for your outreach meetings. Can you tell me how, how many times you did meet with your residents?
Sure.
And can you share any of their comments that they made?
Yeah. So we, what we did is we held, we held two meetings. We held one, both at the clubhouse there at Heritage Lake, which is where we also hold our Homeowners Association meetings. One was at 10 o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday, and then the other one was at 6 o'clock at night the next day on Wednesday. We did a direct mailing advertisement through the Homeowners Association to all the residents, all the members, if you will, at the time, which was roughly 1,750 people or homes. We also did, the HOA put something on the community website to advertise. The morning meeting, we had roughly 25 homeowners in attendance, and the evening one, we had about 35 homeowners in attendance. Questions ranged, you know, they asked, you know, why, why was it ever designated a commercial site? They asked that, and so I kind of explained to them how specific plans work and that, you know, when they're planning land uses decades in advance, they do their best to estimate what will be needed where. They asked about some of the other areas that are zoned for commercial, and so I drew their attention to the ones I was aware of, and I directed them to the city for actual status of applications on those sites, because I didn't have that information with me. They asked if they could get another swimming pool. They asked about the sports park that is planned for the north side of our property, right there where Lisa's indicating. They asked a little bit about that, and so I gave them the information I had on that site.
Is that dedicated, is that gonna be dedicated to the city or a private sports park?
Currently, the arrangement is that all of the parks within Heritage Lake become part of the Valleywide Parks and Recreation District.
And so that's a dedicated sports park right there, then?
Yes.
It's not, it's not, it's currently, everything around it's vested and developed and it's already set in stone?
Well, yes. It's a condition, it's a condition of completing the Heritage Lake Community.
How many acres is that?
I think it's 20.
20, okay.
Yeah. Might be just over.
Yeah, the exhibit says 22.
Yeah, 22.
Planning Area 21.
So, so how many spoke?
Questions, I mean, I would say maybe five or six people at each meeting asked questions. One, another question they asked was, you know, would it raise their property taxes? That sort of thing, you know, and I told them, no, it didn't have anything to do with their property taxes. It wasn't part of the existing CFD out there, and that we anticipated it would not increase their dues from what they're currently paying.
Okay, so they asked for another pool, and you added that?
We had that in there all along, because, I mean, the exhibits that you have here are the exhibits that I showed them, and we had gone ahead and done that because of, over the years of being on the board of the HOA, I've consistently heard their concerns that the current pool was getting overcrowded.
Okay. Your current pool, can you compare to this size? I see this one's 45 by 75. Can I, visually, I have seen the other pool.
Okay.
So can you share with me the size?
If you've seen the other pool, the body of the pool is the same size as this. The difference is, at the, at the center that's there now, we sort of have these wings. So the, it's got the main area where the lane lines are that's the same size as this, but then it has significant more pool area through these sort of triangular wings that's where the kids tend to play and that sort of thing.
Has staff said anything, I saw on your layout, on the housing layout, has, did staff say anything about a racetrack type? I know we've seen that sometimes before, that that's been a concern. Is that a concern at all with the layout that they have proposed?
I think with the size of the track, it's not as much of a concern.
Okay.
It's a smaller, smaller track, but we haven't done a full review of the layout.
The street layout as presented, it sort of becomes a function of just the shape. You know, most of our planning areas out there are odd shapes and radiuses, and so they really lend themselves to the curvilinear streets and that sort of thing, which is, you know, very typical of specific plans that were, that were drawn when this one was drawn. And then typically, because commercial sites work best as rectangles, this was done as a rectangle. And so we're sort of constrained by the shape of the planning area.
All right, so you have other houses that are gonna be coming in around it. You already have the other pool that you have 1,800 homes, you said, about built?
Yes.
And that pool's crowded. How many homes are planned for this area? You've got this, you said this is, there's other homes planned around it. How many are gonna be?
We have current approval for 20, just over 2,600 houses. So this, 2,609, so this would take it to 2,689.
So that won't relieve the-
Well, 26, you know, 26, 2,600 was approved for one swimming pool. And so, you know, in hindsight being 2020, I suppose, you know, somebody planning this today might have, might have planned more pools from the beginning. But as of right now, it's just the one pool, and there's no other. There are future recreation facilities because of the new sports park, but there's, it doesn't include a swimming pool, and that's a public park, not an HOA park.
Well, then, let me, I don't know if you can answer a question on the sports park. Do you know what is planned for that sports park, or is that something that-
Yeah, when we have-
And what number of houses do you need to start that? Do you have a-
It comes toward the end of the development. We're still a few hundred homes away from it being completed. It's tentatively, the preliminary design of it that we've vetted with Valleywide, it's primarily a soccer park, so it has a lot of soccer fields. But it also, the current, the most recent design also has basketball courts, tennis courts, volleyball courts, play structures, two restroom buildings, shaded picnic areas. It's, you know, and there are, we've built three parks there already. This will be the largest of the parks at Heritage Lake.
All right. You talked about compatibility. The surrounding homes are anywhere from 5,000 to 7,000 square foot lots, is that correct?
5,000 to 7,200, yes.
Okay, so why this one at 4,500?
We're just trying to come up with the most efficient layout that, you know, we're losing land, obviously, to the rec facility, but we felt it was important to provide the rec facility. And so we asked our engineer to develop some scenarios that, you know, work fairly efficiently that would still accommodate single-family detached product type, you know, we steer them away from anything attached, or like I said, mode recorder, or anything like that. And the way the site laid out, this was, this was the version that we settled on.
Would you consider the 5,000 square foot lots for this?
I'd have to, we would have to run the financials on that, and I'd have to get my engineer to study it, because I don't know how that lays out. So I can't answer that right now. I'd have to talk to my division management about that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I do live in Heritage Lake, so I feel the pain of the pool. I have three kids that we go to that pool, and it does get crowded. So I appreciate, you know, Stamp Act offering up another pool when you didn't have to. So I appreciate that. I like how they're 5, or 50-foot-wide lots, so visually, when you drive by, it looks like another part of the community. You don't get that townhome or condo feel. So I really don't have any issues with this. And one thing, when it does come to commercial, that DPFG, Lisa, I believe at the intersection of Lennenberg and Simpson, there's also a commercial center?
Yes.
That D.R. Horton just built around, so that's another commercial piece that's currently sitting vacant around our community. So there's lots of commercial, and I do not see this property being sustainable for anybody who wants to move in there. So I think the houses and the pool are a great addition, so.
Get this right. Let me make one question now. When you put these homes in there, have you considered the impact to the local schools? And perhaps emergency responders, times to get somebody in there having a heart attack to a nurse facility? My primary concern was the school, the schools. You have two or three schools in that vicinity?
Yeah, we have, we have an elementary school that was built as part of Heritage Lake and a middle school that was built as part of Heritage Lake. They are directly within the community. And then Heritage High School is to the north of Briggs Road. You know, this is very preliminary for us, so we haven't done detailed analysis on those sorts of things, all of which would be required if we go further down, down the road. But 80 units in the big scheme of things isn't enough to cause an issue with the school district or with first responders or emergency services. It's honestly a drop in the bucket when you look at everything that's planned for that part of Menifee. But again, we, all of that, if we get further down to a formal application, those are all the sorts of things that staff will analyze as we work through the process.
Okay, my last question concerning the racetrack. There's only one way into this community?
Two.
As designed?
Two. There, we have, we have access off of what will be the extension of Heritage Lake Drive on the west side of the site, and then access on the south side at McCall.
Okay, and nothing going over to Briggs Road?
Correct.
Have you considered putting anything over that way?
No.
Just for convenience of all of those homes?
Well, I think with the exception of people who may be going up to the high school, most people will be going from there, they'll be headed west to the freeway, or they'll be headed west to go south down to Newport. So I think the access as provided is probably the access that will most regularly be used. We didn't look into access onto Briggs. It's, that's a signalized intersection in the bottom right-hand corner at Briggs.
Right.
And so putting access so close to that might cause some traffic issues, so we didn't pursue that.
Okay. And the last question I went, wanted to bring up, in putting this pool in here, it appears that that's all that's gonna go there. There's not gonna be like a entertainment facility or something for, you know, people to just gather and just chill, I mean, hang out, you know?
No, not short of just using the pool. And, you know, that exhibit does show a spa, and then the building is a restroom building and equipment room. As I said, the main rec center has a lot more amenities for families. It has a dedicated splash park separate from the swimming pool. It has a tot lot within the pool area. It has docks on the lake for paddle boarding. So, you know, we anticipate that if this goes forward, while there won't be any restrictions unless after we're gone, the HOA board were to make new rules, what we anticipate is that just by the nature of the facility, families will still be drawn to the main pool, and folks who maybe wanna swim laps or that sort of thing will be drawn more to this pool. Not to say that somebody might not be at this pool with their kids, but, you know, most of the little kids wanna be by the splash, with the splash park.
Are there community, facilities for community meetings at the HOAs, or?
Yeah, the main-
This one is gonna be void of all of that.
Correct. The main facility has a clubhouse, and that's where the HOA meetings are held, and that space is available to our membership to rent out, so people have weddings there and birthday parties and anniversary parties and Tupperware parties, and so that's, that is available. That facility is available.
Well, go ahead, let's go ahead and wrap up the questions. We have one more workshop after this. I have a couple quick comments. Do we have a, do we have a flyover like Google Maps or something to the immediate right? Because I know as a standalone commercial, this doesn't make sense, but there is the, is it the Winchester Specific Plan to the east here? And what, how far over, and what's, what's going on over there to the right? You can't just look at this in a vacuum, so.
So there's, in that specific plan, there's commercial in this area, and then business park below.
And how was that viewed to be accessed? Because, you know, one of the, the things he's saying is, look, we don't have freeway access, which makes sense, you know, for a commercial, but yet we have all that commercial to the east. How's that supposedly going to be accessed?
I would imagine that it would be accessed via Briggs Road. It's not a specific plan I've looked into too much because it's not within our city. But from what I've heard, uh, the, the residential portions of that specific plan have been mapped or maps are in process. But there's nothing in process for the commercial or industrial component.
Is that Briggs that hooks up to Dominogony heading north? Is that?
Uh, it would hook up to Highway seventy-four.
Highway seventy-four, okay.
Right now, it does not go all the way through. So, um, but the commercial site here, that's the Heritage Lake's, uh, shopping center. And then there is a shopping center in process right here.
There, okay. Does this specific, I know the city can only have like four general plan amendments a year. Is a specific plan amendment count towards that or not?
No, it will not.
You say it's not, Bob's saying yes.
Uh, well.
General plan amendment.
Well, we, we, in our general plan land use map, we called out the specific plan areas. We didn't show the land uses within the specific plans so that we wouldn't have to do a general plan amendment. With most, uh, other jurisdictions, they show the land uses, the underlying general plan. So in other jurisdictions, you would probably do a general plan amendment. But in Menifee, we show the specific plan areas so that we can make the process a little bit easier.
Okay, so it won't count against us there. The, and again, these new homes will be part of the general, uh, Heritage Lake's Property Owners Association and all that, have rights to everything, paying dues and, and all that.
That was one of the first things I had to verify is just that, what's, what's, what's called annexable territory? And it is annexable territory.
Now, you said though, that it's not going to be part of the CFD that's set up for all the landscaping and everything else here?
No, not that it wouldn't. They, they were asking the question of if, if we're doing this and providing a rec facility, would it increase their payments to the C, and it, it would not.
So, but they're going to enter into a CFD or LMD to pay for landscape everything, just like the rest of the?
Yeah, we'll have to figure out-
Or is it all HOA in there?
No, it's, so the only thing that would, most of Heritage Lake is maintained either through Valleywide, um, or some sort of LMD.
LMDs, okay.
As far as streetscaping and that sort of thing, um, yeah, it would either annex into an existing or we'd have to come up with some mechanism. It may, it may be that we have to put it in the HOA, but we don't anticipate that.
Okay. My thoughts on the, the lots, I, 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 and I know a lot of the commission really is tending towards the five thousand and bigger lots. I know you're, you've got economies you're trying to meet here with that, but there's a, there's a general dislike for smaller lots. So as you're putting the money into your elevations and your plans, you might want to keep that in mind. Let's see, uh, is this going to, because the lot, you're projecting these smaller lots, is there, are you projecting to have sidewalk and curb and gutter and everything in here? Sidewalks in here or no?
Yeah, yes. All, all, all typical to the existing tracks out there. With the exception of, Menifee made it, made a change. In the earlier tracks, we had, um, sidewalks separated from curb by parkways. And in the newer tracks, the sidewalks are curb adjacent. And so that new standard would apply here.
This is all curb adjacent?
Right, but it, but they're public sidewalks, public streets.
Okay.
Are the, sorry, are the right-of-way widths consistent with all the other streets in the neighborhood?
They, they would be consistent with, yes, with the, with like Lakeview and, yeah, the other residential.
We don't want the tiny little streets.
No, no, they're, they're, as I said, it, it will feel, it will feel like all of the other, all of the other five thousand square foot detached areas.
Generally, I shy away greatly from converting commercial to residential, but I can kind of see how this is somewhat of an infill. So don't have a problem with that. Do you have a problem with the, the smaller lots? So take a look at penciling that out and you really should. Do you plan a pocket park of any kind in here? I know you're already doing the pool, but you have eighty homes.
The, the, between the Paseos, the existing parks, the, I mean, the, the, the community is very well-served for recreation.
So where's the, where's the closest even pocket park to here?
Closest park is directly west, the first green you see as you go west on McCall. And it's not a pocket park, it's a, it's a park.
Oh, it's right here, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, that one.
You know, even if you're, especially if you're going to be building smaller lots, which means you're going to get, even though you have somewhat the same product, you're going to get a lower price line, you're going to get smaller, you're going to get families, you're going to get more kids. You really need a pocket park in there. So that's something to, to think about in there. That's all I really have on that. Did you have a question, Commissioner Crumman, comment?
The property directly to the north, remind me what the boundary of your development property area is?
The, the diagonal railroad tracks.
Right there.
That's the boundary of our property.
So you could put in all kinds of amenities in a, a lot to the north?
It, it's all, it's all mapped already. It has, it has an approved tentative map that lays out.
Has an approved tentative map? So are there any, so you couldn't add a pool to there or add a, a park there? As, as the chair is talking about?
Again, there's a twenty-acre park there that we will be building. And, you know, putting, adjusting the tentative map to, um, put an additional pool someplace else, uh, isn't in our plans.
My thoughts on this, I, I agree with the chair that I normally oppose rezoning these things just for convenience. Um, and I know that, that sounds glib, but it's really not. I'm, I'm, I'm taking this seriously. And if you had come in and said, you know, here's what we want to do. We want to put in these ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots and build these beautiful giant homes over here because everything else is kind of jammed in, I'd be really interested. But saying, I want to take this from commercial to residential so we can put smaller lots in and jam more properties in there, is something that I really wouldn't be in favor of. It's the number one complaint we get from, from people, uh, in our community that they want more space. A big parking lot for commercial area, I don't know if that satisfies what they're talking about. So we're kind of, you're kind of stuck here and I feel for you, but you bought it this way. And it didn't work out, I'm sorry. I, I, I prefer you just to grasp the whole thing over and call it a big park and, and, and leave it that way. But I, I don't think I could get behind a project that comes in with forty-five hundred square foot lots. And with commercial being potentially, as, as our, our planner was talking about, being on the, the east side, that being commercial, that would face other commercial and that would feed into each other. So that would then become kind of a commercial zone. There is the high school not far up the road from Briggs. There's nothing else over there that would serve all of these people. I mean, you could put a market in there and it would go gangbusters. Somebody needs to go out quick for something, who knows?
If every, if all that stuff to the east built out, which it will, it, it could serve, go ahead.
Well, even at the intersection of McCall and Newport, I know for nine years there's been a sign that says retail center coming soon. And it's going on nine years, so.
That's right. So if you put a commercial, if you put a commercial development there now, for the next nine years, you'd have a corner of the market. Then you come in and say, can we tear this down and put houses? It's served its purpose, now it's going to be a ghost town. But there's just, it seems to me like a business opportunity. I really do appreciate Commissioner Doty's comments though, as somebody who's experiencing that community, saying, hey, look, we need that kind of stuff in there. But the, this, this proposal is not something I could, I could get behind.
I think, I think, uh, we, we see the value of the pool. And that was a very good, and obviously that's a sacrifice of acreage, but I think you, you kind of got the message of the size of the lot is an issue. So if you could take that in consideration, that would be very good.
Sure. And, and I would just like to clarify that, you know, we're, you know, and, and again, I'm, I understand, I'm, I'm a developer. And so you're gonna, you're gonna hear this as coming from the developer. But, um, you know, we really are, you know, we've invested, you know, thirteen years and, and a lot of capital into turning a potato field into a very beautiful master planned community. During the recession, we never stopped development. We continue to operate three actively selling communities throughout the recession. None of the property went back to a lender or back to a bank. Our partner, uh, in the development, um, did go bankrupt and we bought all of their interest in the community so that we could continue to build it and develop it. So, you know, we really want it, see it be the best community it can be. And the main reason we're coming to you with this is because our feeling is that we will be finished with the homes and that site will just sit there vacant for an, an indeterminate amount of time. And so we would really rather finish the community. Uh, our, our study that was done about commercial, um, centers within the area that I described, the three miles to the northwest and south and the one mile to the east, um, based on projected housing units and, um, population from those housing units, said the area would support one to two neighborhood commercial centers. And because there are six sites that have been identified as more desirable, that's why we felt like there's a high likelihood that if we don't move forward with something else, it would just be a, a fifteen-acre vacant lot for a long time. And so that, that's our, that's our primary motivation.
Did have one other question. So all the, the dirt that's in view, that's all that's left to develop in the entire specific plan, right?
Sure. So directly to the south, you see two areas of dirt. Those are both communities that were actively selling, have model homes open, people moving in. Diagonally, that area that, that to the west is adjacent to the lake, we're actively selling and building homes there. That, if you saw a current aerial, that tract is about six, or excuse me, about forty-five percent complete. So you'd see a lot more rooftops there now. And then, yes, the, the stuff north of McCall and north of this site, um, is mapped for the remainder of the dwelling units and the twenty-two acre park.
Okay. Well, we better, uh, wrap it up here. Thank you so much. By the way, I appreciate you, you're very smart bringing this to the, to the commission with a workshop, um, to vet out things. And that's what we wanted every, every project to do, would be a smart thing to do. Do we have any public speakers?
We do not. I just want to note that the commission did receive the DPFG letter in your blue folders.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and close this portion. Thank you for, we'll go ahead and, uh, start on the second workshop here. It may run over a few minutes because it's, uh, uh, pretty important. We'll go ahead. Do we have a presentation on this, Bob?
Yes, we do.
We need to change. Just, uh, this is for pre-application review number two thousand fifteen dash thirteen. It's, uh, referred to as the Rancho Benito, um, project. And Manny Baeza is the project planner for this. I would ask Manny to review the project and, uh, before you this evening, then we'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Chairman Tom, Tom, Chairman Thomas, members of the commission. Uh, this is the Rancho Benito project. It proposes a two hundred and ten attached townhome development and a two-building commercial center. Here's an aerial of the site. It's located on the south side of Garbani Road, uh, the west side of Han Road and the east side of Sherman Road. It's in a largely undeveloped area of the city. The site has an acreage of approximately seventeen acres. Uh, here is the, uh, site plan of the proposed, uh, development. It proposes two hundred and ten attached, uh, townhomes on fourteen acres. That's located on the west side of the property. And then on the easterly three acres, a two-building, single-story, twenty-seven thousand square foot, uh, commercial center is being proposed. A little bit of background on the project. Uh, it's located in the EDC Southern Gateway, uh, subarea of the general plan. The general plan calls out a preferred mix of uses. Uh, it envisioned seventy percent business park uses in this area, uh, twenty percent commercial uses and ten percent residential uses. Um, the theme of this corridor would be economic development, economic vitality, uh, job creation. The general plan, um, calls for possibly an auto mall on the west side of Han Road, between Han and the freeway. Uh, staff has reviewed the project and has a few concerns. We're going to go over those right now. Uh, the first concern staff has is the project density. Uh, the project, uh, proposes two hundred and ten dwelling units on just over about fourteen and a half gross acres. Uh, that amounts to a density of fourteen point four dwelling units per acre. Uh, there is a similarly, um, a similar type of development on the other side of the freeway, Christiansen Ranch. Uh, it's located in a similar area surrounded by, uh, single-family residences. And that only proposes eleven dwelling units per acre. So it gives you an idea of, you know, what you would see in this type of area of the city. Uh, this level of density may be better suited towards the community core subarea where a downtown, uh, pattern of development is sought. And those are staff thought on, thoughts on, on that part of the project. A second concern that staff has is the, uh, limited residential land available in the EDC. According to the general plan, um, only ten percent of the EDC is supposed to be, be used for, I'm sorry, fifteen percent overall, ten percent for this subarea. Um, only, well, that, those are the limitations, uh, for residential land. And, uh, this site would, uh, consume a disproportionate amount of residential land in the Southern Gateway. Uh, also, it may limit, uh, options for future uses as the Southern Gateway builds out, especially, uh, also the medical uses that are going to develop south of Marietta Road, or Marietta, in, in Marietta. Uh, another concern that staff has is the design of the commercial center. Here it is here. Um, we've cut, we, isolated that part of the site. The project proposes a typical strip center layout. Uh, does not relate to the type of development called for in the Southern Gateway, southern area. It's not likely to create a high employment or a complement, uh, uses that are called for along Han Road such as an auto mall. Um, also, Garbani Road and Han Road in the future will be a major intersection. They're both general plan streets. And, uh, this, this site, uh, would, um, a better, more substantial project would be better suited at this site. The last concern staff is raising of, with regard to this project is the configuration of open space. The site has a good amount of open space, uh, but most of it is located in interior courtyards and at the edges of buildings. Uh, there are three, uh, larger open space areas. One, well, they're outlined in pink, one where the pool is at. A second one here towards the center. And there's also a trail along the southerly boundary. Uh, but the configuration that's given limits the ability to have, you know, act, outdoor activities. Also, there's limited amenities. All there is is a pool. There's no, um, other amenities, uh, especially considering the number of units they're proposing. Uh, there aren't any tot lots or half basketball courts, uh, state structures, barbecues, picnic tables. So with that, uh, staff is requesting feedback, uh, for the project. And staff is recommending to, um, to conduct, for, for the planning commission, conduct a public workshop and provide feedback.
Okay, thank you, Manny. Uh, do we have the applicant here like to speak?
Good evening, Chairman, planning, uh, planning commissioners and, uh, staff. My name is John Capelli. I'm, uh, planning, uh, I'm one of the project managers for Rancho Benito. Just here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. I have some, some definite thoughts on the project, but let's go ahead and start with, uh, Commissioner Doty.
I guess my biggest concern is, and I think residential in the EDC, I think mixed use. You know, something that's got, uh, commercial on the bottom, residential above it. And that's, I mean, to me, that's an EDC residential use. Like I said, you bring this in and it eats up a big chunk of that ten percent. So that's, that's the first kind of concern. And secondly, I don't, I don't see any water quality. There's no way I see this project being built this way. You're not going to be able to clean your water. So I think, from that aspect, I hope you don't think you're going to build as many units because I think just from that aspect, unless you're going to go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on subsurface cleaning, but, um, yeah, I just, I mean, to me, I don't, in the EDC, I, I don't see, this isn't what I envisioned as residential, myself. But that's, I think it's, it's highly populated. Commercial centers, not the desired layout for what I think. So, yeah, I can't say, just, I don't, I'm not the biggest fan of the, what's being proposed.
Okay, Commissioner Sobin.
Okay, did you say Canale?
Capelli, John Capelli.
And by the way, thank you as well for bringing the project in a workshop. That's a smart thing to do.
No problem.
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Capelli.
Well, we're working on several projects in the area. We're the, actually the developer that was bringing the auto mall to the, uh, opposite side along the freeway. This is a residual piece. As we're working on the auto mall, we've had, uh, you know, still trying to get the, uh, the manufacturers to come, you know, to the city. Um, we're also working on a project just south of this. Um, I understand, uh, Commissioner Doty's, uh, concerns as far as, uh, a mixed use, like something you would see like San Diego or Anaheim. Um, this isn't that type of, you know, we feel this is not that type of area. What we did is we used this product to actually serve as a buffer between the seventy-two hundred square foot and the commercial. All our commercial we did, we're, we's towards the, uh, auto mall and, um, all along the freeway.
Well, we don't have that much EDC. And we, we need jobs here. We need good-paying jobs where people can live and work here. And I think we're really protective of that area. You're one of the first projects that's come forward like this. But it is, it is truly not what our general plan has envisioned. It's close to the hospitals. We envision more medical offices, good-paying jobs. People, I've heard that a lot from people that they, biotech or medical, yes, a car dealership would be great. I do feel, as what staff said, is that this could be, it could chase away future development that could possibly be there. So I do have a concern of that.
Commissioner Crewin.
If I could ask of staff, what is the percentage of residential that this takes up? Has it been calculated?
Yeah, it's in the staff report. Well, we'll say it's about fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent of the ten percent, or fourteen percent of the?
Hundred percent. So if you had, what is it, a hundred and two acres, and you have, it's approximately, you have fourteen acres, it's fourteen percent. So your balance is about eighty-five percent of acres, I would say.
Well, hang on a second. My question is, the EDC has a slot for ten percent of that property.
Fifteen percent for all EDC across the city.
Right.
Not just this project.
Ten percent in the subarea.
And that was just a, an allocation, potential allocation. That wasn't within the guidelines or rules of the EDC. The EDC rules are fifteen percent citywide.
Right.
Can be housing.
And then, but I was focusing on the ten percent of the subarea being residential. That would calculate out to fifteen percent across the whole EDC program. Of that ten percent of the subarea, what percentage of, of that ten percent is this project?
Well, let's say it's, just over a hundred acres of residential land within the subarea can be devoted to residential. And because it's just over a hundred percent, it's about fourteen percent.
Okay, so this would actually eat up all of the residential allotment?
No.
No, I think, I think, if I may, I think what Manny is saying is that it's fourteen percent of the subarea would be dedicated to the residential. So there's fourteen acres within the subarea of the roughly, I think it's a thousand, roughly a thousand acres or more or less.
So it's, so what you wind up getting is one percent of the land, because it constitutes about one percent of the land in, in the subarea, but it's eating up fourteen percent of the residential land.
All right. I, we've tried very, very hard to get away from this exact design in our city. And it just doesn't reflect, we've, this commission, this particular set of commissioners, including Commissioner Doty, who joined kind of later than myself, but we've rejected this concept on many, many different versions. And I, it just seems very generic and crowded, and it goes against the philosophy that we're trying to develop moving forward. You talk about San Diego and Anaheim, great cities.
Great cities.
And that's more of our goal than, than this.
I understand. Where in Menifee can you get a home if you're under fifty-five, that's under seventy-two hundred square foot lots, if you're under fifty-five?
Actually, quite a few of them. We just approved one over, over north side of, yeah, over off.
Christianson Ranch you have?
Excuse me?
Christianson Ranch?
Christianson, no, over north of Marietta. We just approved ones with, what were the ones, member? They had the large lots.
Van Dale.
Van Dale, yeah. So there are quite a few, a few. But what you need to keep in mind is, and we understand your desire, believe me, my dad was a builder, I, we understand. But if you look at the definition of EDC, this is a revenue generating area. It's actually quite a small percentage of the city. So when someone comes in and says, well, I'd like to put housing there, that wasn't the spirit nor the letter of the intent for the housing element. The only reason we even allowed any housing at all was in a mixed use. And actually, this commission, well, a lot of these guys weren't here, but it was vertical only, and then the council put on horizontal. So the intent of it is revenue generating. And so we have a very short, small area of revenue generating for our city that will define whether we become a Moreno Valley or even like Eastvale and Hoopa Valley, who have very difficult revenue streams. So that's our motivation, so you understand. And that's kind of what you're fighting against here. So, yeah, go ahead. That's where that thought, finish your thought there.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with this, in that the residential in this zone is an adjunct to the commercial, as opposed to taking up part of the commercial footprint. So that's where I think we're disconnecting on the intent here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes, you're aware that you have two blue water streams, one to the northeast and one to the south of your site. And I agree with Commissioner Doty. You're going to have a problem with water there. The second thing is, I spoke to the property owners. They're not really enthused about this project. Number one is the influx of more young people with nowhere to go. There's nothing in this plan, as I saw it, that would prove to be beneficial to the number of children that'll be in that area. I did have a problem with the number of homes that you're planning on putting there. And again, I agree with the rest of the commission. I strongly recommend that you consider perhaps another design.
So just to give an example, today's paper, Hoopa Valley rejects warehouse for third vote, third time, because it was outside the boundaries of what they designated in the city as where that would be appropriate. Council said for the third time, no. And that's the similar theme here. We were very protective of our EDC. And while your intent is probably to develop a good product, it's not meant to be in this area. So we'd encourage you to go, come up with a different design. We appreciate you coming to the commission with the workshop. Come with a commercial, light industrial offices, some kind of combo. And that would be definitely encouraged by the, by the planning commission. Do you have any questions for us, clarification, or anything we can do for you on that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, I do.
Go ahead.
Rick Croy.
Morning, commissioners. Rick Croy, I'm speaking as a private citizen. First of all, congratulations, Ms. Sobek. You, you deserve the Golden Tenet Issue Award, two thousand homes, my goodness. This one, the staff seems to have gotten it exactly right. As one who was, attended many of the G-PAC meetings and the several planning commission meetings regarding the EDC, this may be a good project, it's just in the wrong place. We have to jealously protect those revenue generators for this city. And it's probably going to be, take some patience to do that because there, if you allow this, then you're going to have to allow it everywhere else. And that's the danger that I see. Not that this is bad, or there's not a place for something like this, just in the wrong place. Thanks.
Thank you.
No further speakers.
No further speakers. Okay. We'll go ahead and close. Does commissioners have any other comments, or does the staff have any comments or questions? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the pub, the workshop. And do we want to take a five-minute break or go right into our commission meeting? Is everyone okay going forward?
Just go straight ahead.
Okay. Let's go ahead then, and welcome everyone to our seven o'clock meeting. Let's call this to order. Can we take a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Carwin.
Here.
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Vice Chair Sobek.
Here.
And Chair Thomas.
Here. Let's go ahead and stand for the flag salute, since we will be losing Commissioner Sobek here pretty soon. Maybe she can offer that for us?
Be happy to. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want you guys to quit pausing for that.
What's that?
Say it right.
Do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Okay. We don't have any presentations. Do we have any general public comments at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. It moves us on to approval of the minutes. I know Commissioner Doty had some kind of a comment or correction.
Yes, in regards to the minutes, now I can't find it, where we made the additional comments, was it seven point one, regarding the approval of the shopping center at the corner of, there we go.
Which page are we on?
That's a special meeting unit. No, it was with the shopping center, Rite Aid and Archibald. Okay, here we go. On page three, following discussion, the commission made recommendations to, on the third tab, it says install the curb median with the left turn pocket on Menifee Road. Can we add from Newport Road to Rockport Road?
Yes, sir.
Just so there's a clarification, that the curb median isn't just at that entrance, that it covers the entire length of Menifee Road?
Yes, I'll make that change.
Thank you.
Okay. Other than that, are there any other change, comments or corrections on the minutes?
Oh, I can't. But I had a question, but I can't.
Okay, we'll bring that up in our commissioner comments at the end. So do we have a motion to approve both minutes?
I, I had to recuse myself.
Because, oh, okay, because you had to leave for that, but that one item, not for the whole thing.
Right.
Right. So you can vote on the minutes, because the minutes accurately reflect that you recuse yourself, but you're still present, so yes.
Okay.
So do we have a motion for both sets of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as amended by Commissioner Doty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have the consent calendar. Being that that's inside the consent calendar, can we take a vote on, or do we pull it and go over it, or what? Normally, it's in the consent calendar, you just approve or don't approve the consent calendar. So do I ask if somebody wants to discuss this and pull, pull the item? Is that what?
You can just ask to move for approval of the consent calendar.
The staff would love that, yeah.
You're asking, you're asking for staff's input. I'm providing it.
Okay.
So that's one, that's one, if there is a commissioner who would like to pull it for some reason, we'd be happy to do that as well, and we can go over it. That's, that's no problem either.
Is there any commissioner who would like to pull this item and discuss further? Or can we all, I'll ask it that way. Is anyone like to pull this item to discuss further?
No.
No? No? No, no, no. Okay. Then do we take a roll call vote on this, or just a motion?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, including item eight point one?
I make a motion, we approve the consent calendar, item eight point one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We don't have any public hearings. Are there any, there's no discussion items. Bob, do you have any comments or items to discuss?
Yes, I just have a couple of things. First of all, we've got the distinction of having a planning commissioner that has another title as well as councilwoman-elect Sobek. And just congratulations from the staff on, on your election to the city council. We wanted to acknowledge that. And we've enjoyed working with you. And in the time that I've been here, I've really enjoyed being able to work with you as well. So we'll miss you on the commission, but we'll enjoy having you on the council as well. So. The second thing is that the Rite Aid project, that has been appealed and that will be going to the city council. The appeal will be going to the city council at the November eighteenth meeting. And I just, so I just wanted to let the planning commission know about that.
Are they appealing any specific items that we, conditions?
The environment, essentially, they're, they're appealing the environmental and the, some of the issues that were addressed under the environmental traffic, for example, would be one of them as well, some of the traffic issues. So that's being presented to the city council.
They don't want to put the median in and the turns?
There's, there's a number, there's several items that they've identified in there. But in terms of the analysis of the traffic impacts, I think is the, is one of the biggest concerns that they have.
May I ask a question at this time on that Rite Aid? Rite Aid, Walgreens bought Rite Aid out after we met. How would that affect this project?
It's, it would, if anything else, it's just the project itself would still be approved for the type of use that's there. So if it's a Walgreens versus a Rite Aid, we, I don't think anyone knows yet how that's going to work out, if they're going to keep both names, if they're going to change them to one name.
Because that, that could affect our residents.
But the project itself was approved.
Okay, because that could affect some of our residents, because I understand that Rite Aid, we have a lot of military families. And Rite Aid accepts military medical where Walgreens doesn't. And so, I don't know. I, it just came up. That was some questions asked to me, and I.
Right. But the use itself was approved based on the type of use that it is, not the, not the operator itself.
All right.
And then the, the last item I had was just to, I think is all of you aware, the city council did hold a public hearing on the EDC recommendations that the planning commission had forwarded, and they approved those at the last city council meeting. So we were all very happy with, with that as well. So again, congratulations on that process.
Put that to bed. There you go. I bet Bob's happy about that, aren't you?
It was, it was a, we got it through.
There you go. Okay, we have commissioner comments.
Yes. I have a question regarding the city council agenda. When we had that vote on the marijuana cultivation, did that ever go up to city council?
No, that did not. And that is actually, that's something that will be brought back most likely to the city council.
You pointed to me.
In the near, no, to the city council. You've made a recommendation. That'll be forwarded on to the city council probably in the near future, very near future.
All right. And I also want to acknowledge and congratulate Commissioner Sobek for her election. I foresee you doing wonderful things. We've seen you do wonderful things here. I'm sure when you come sit in my chair during the council meetings, you'll do wonderful things here for the chair. I'll make sure I keep it up for you. And I also want to acknowledge the retirement of our city clerk, Kathy Bennett. She's retiring, so I want to thank her. She was the first person I met here after I was appointed, and she made me feel very welcome and prepared. And I envy her being able to retire. And who knows? Maybe she'll end up, she'll end up on this dais in her retirement, as some other retired folks in this community have.
I'd like to thank Kathy Bennett. She was probably, she was a shocker for me when you first came on the commission, because she was so helpful and kind and walked you through everything. When I didn't turn my reports in, she didn't yell at me. She just said, come here, Commissioner Thomas, I have it for you. And she was very knowledgeable. And so if you could pass on my regards that she's loved. And when my wife became ill, she was very personally supportive, and I was grateful for that. I'd like to thank Lisa Sobek for serving on the commission with us. And.
I'm not dying.
I was grateful to have her support. And the nice thing about Lisa, and most of you don't sit next to her, but she takes about a thousand notes. And she has facts all overwritten. And so she was very capable at that. And I just wanted to acknowledge that part of you.
Thank you.
And I think you'll be on to big, wonderful things in the council. And it'll be with all, a bunch of men there too. So you're going to have to put your big girl pants on and be tough. They're, they're not as nice as us there. So be strong.
Put your Hillary Clinton thing on.
All right. So that's all I have to say. Anyone else have any other comments?
Yes. I'm in mourning about Kathy Bennett, mainly because she was the first person in the city that I, in the city administration that I'd ever met. And I was so overwhelmed by her personality that I made an effort to be her friend. And she really opened my eyes as far as city administration was concerned. And again, I'd like to thank Lisa for her service, not only on the commission, but in the community. I had a conversation with some rocks that knew her. So she's a phenomenal person, and I hope to work with her in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Well.
Want to say your big goodbye?
No, because we're going to, are we, we're meeting.
We have one more. She has one more meeting, right?
So, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't, there's no Kleenex here, so. But just thank you all. It's been a pleasure serving on the commission and with everybody. And yes, we are going to miss Kathy. Before this building was built, I remember going over to the one across the way, and they had a little, little office over there. And Kathy Bennett was the first person that I met. And our city's been in good hands. She's been a good, good city clerk. She's so kind and warm to everybody. So I hope she hears this, that we are telling her thank you. I do have one question, though. I've been asked this quite a bit. Do we know where we're standing with the Stater Brothers Shopping Center? Can you answer that?
It's, it's still in litigation. At the trial court, the city prevailed. So, but unfortunately, it was appealed shortly thereafter. So we're going to be dealing with briefing in the Court of Appeal soon.
So we're going to be dealing with briefing in the Court of Appeal soon. But hopefully, that will be resolved in a matter of months, but it's, it's hard to know with how long the Court of Appeal will take.
All right, thank you. And thank you, everyone.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, if we could just adjourn to the November twenty-third meeting. It's a Monday.
Okay, yes, so we will adjourn to the November twenty-third meeting. Any, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Are we going to do anything about this?
What? No, that was approved by the consent calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, yep.
I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.